Amira was here. Counselor Charlton is here, the thing on my screen now I have to get rid of. And Counselor Carl Hawkes and Counselor Jack Fancy, so we are all in attendance. So the, the, our role this evening is to listen to your comments. It's to listen to what you're saying, to take it back as a council body. And to decide if we need to make changes in this, if there's misinformation that we need to correct. But our role here this evening is to listen. The role of staff, and we have Ian Watson, who is worked with the company that worked with Planning Advisory Committee. Since 2018 on these documents, he will give some background information. It's not the time to question and answer, what does this mean, what does that mean? I live here, how is it affected? That's the opportunity to simply express your positions on what's within the document. And during the course, sometimes people become a little over dramatic or upset. I just ask in this day and age that we all respect one another. And we just try to keep as calm, cool, and collected as we can. A little bit of background information. In 2009, the region of Queens adopted land use zoning and planning across all of Queens County. What I have suddenly come to learn in the last several days. Is that many of our residents were unaware of these rules. And that means to me, they, they weren't being affected by it. It, 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 if they weren't following the rules, no one was complaining because we're complaint driven. So many people were surprised to learn that these rules have been placed since 2019. The wholesale livestock rules have been in place since 2019. Now, I, since 2009, excuse me, 2009, so 13 years, these rules have been in place. It is true that there were some areas in which you could have had wholesale livestock previously. That you are now outlawed, people also, or it's suggested that you not be regulated. There are people I spoke to today, and I spoke to a great number of people today. That have 125 head of cattle. And they're worried about getting rid of their cattle. So I said, how much land do you own? 230 acres. And I said, you're an intensive farmer, you're legal in Queens County. People are just simply unaware of the existing rules that have been in place since 2009. So in the next couple of weeks, we need to clear up that misinformation, but for now, we're just going to leave it where it is. Household livestock seems to be a huge issue. And I understand people want a homestead, people want to get back to the land. People want security of their food that is understood 100%. But I also know that in the past documents and upon past consultation. There were suggestions regarding how much land you needed for how many animals. For example, if you wanted, you know, two hogs, it was suggested you have an acre. If you want 25 chickens, then you need to have an acre. There's, there's concerns expressed yesterday regarding, well, I have to keep my, my chickens enclosed. I have to keep my Guinea hens enclosed. And if I keep them enclosed, and I realize we have a big wood tick problem in this part of the county, in this part of the world. Enclosed does not necessarily mean in a pen. It means just don't let them out of your yard to run around the neighbor's yard. If they're enclosed, if you keep them in your yard, they're enclosed. So I just wanted, so we're going to just open, have to read this because this is what you have to do. So the purpose of the public hearing is to provide an interested person an opportunity to present an oral or written presentation. To Council of Region of Queens Municipality with regard to the intention to adopt a revised municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw. Procedure of the public hearing is as follows. So every person is eligible to speak, but first must be recognized by the chair, and that is me. Must give his or her name and civic address before commencing. So just simply state your name and your civic address. We are going to, we can't, for some reason, the chat does not seem to be enabled, even though it is enabled. So we're going to have to monitor the hand raising. So there's a button on your screen where you can raise your hand, you can do this. It might be a long night, but eventually we're going to get everyone. So we're not going home until everyone who wants to say something and lives in Queens County gets to say something. A person may speak more than once, preference being given to those who have not previously spoken. The meeting would be conducted following parliamentary procedure. We use our own rules of order as well as colonial rules. Prior for opening the floor for comments, Upland Planning and Design. That's Ian Watson is going to provide a brief overview of the documents. So the past council started this in 2018, 19. They've had public hearings, they've been public engagement sessions, there's been online surveys. He's going to go through that process that has brought us to this point. So I'm going to turn it over to Ian.
Thank you, Mayor Norman. Just going to try and share my screen here. I do have that ability. Can you see that all right? Yeah. All right. Thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight. This is a follow up on our in-person meeting yesterday, which had a great turnout and really good comments. My name's Ian Watson, I'm a senior planner with Upland, and we've been working with municipality. Over as Mayor Norman said, over the past three-ish years to update the planning documents for the region of Queens. What this project is all about at the end of the day is updating the documents, which are the municipal planning strategy. That's the kind of blueprint for the community. And the land use bylaw, which is the rules and regulations for how development happens in the region of Queens. So it's about updating the reviewing and updating, if necessary, the vision for the region in terms of development. Updating those land use policies and regulations, and then where we can simplify in the content and language. In the documents to make them as easy as to use as possible, while still being legally enforceable. So yeah, this has been a long process made longer by COVID, but here we are today, building on a whole bunch of work. So way back in 2018, 2019, we did a series of pop-up events, various locations throughout the region. Held seven public open houses, one in each electoral district. Stakeholder workshops and individual stakeholder calls. So the workshops were like focus groups with environmental groups, business groups, developers, tourism groups. As well as a series of online surveys. We then did a whole bunch of analysis, we drafted up visions, goals and objectives. Created six different discussion papers on various topics like housing, the economy. Developed a policy direction paper that set some early directions. Workshoped that with the Planning Advisory Committee to get a sense of where we should go. And then went through a series of internal drafts, both, you know, with staff and then with the Planning Advisory Committee to review those. Just as we were about to take those drafts out, COVID shut the world down. So we put together a series of information videos to keep the momentum going. And then once, I guess it was, was it last year? I don't even know what time anymore. Once it was possible to kind of get out in person again, we had a series again of seven public open houses. To review the drafts in Beach Meadows, Caledonia, Greenfield, one online, Port Mattoon, Mill Village and Liverpool. We developed an input, some community input summary of what we heard at those. Took that back to Planning Advisory Committee for further discussion and some final direction on the drafts. Updated those, reviewed them with Planning Advisory Committee, made tweaks. And then took them to council, which ended up here. If all this information is still available online, all the background reports, all the what we heard on engagement. That's still all available on queensplan.ca or dot com, dot com, I think, for both. And some of the things we heard, you know, in the early high level engagement and consultation. Things that people really cared about and needed to be reflected in these documents were the environment. Changing demographics in Queens, shrinking populations, aging populations. Housing and in terms of accessibility, availability, affordability. And also quality, you know, having housing that that meets people's needs. And always, you know, underpinning all of this is the economy. When we took the drafts out, there was a number of more specific issues that really, you know, came in focus. Things like parking at Cars Beach, RVs, the approach to hamlets. Household livestock, short-term rentals. So these were kind of, you know, a lot of the issues that as we went back and did the final draft, we looked harder at these and refined the approach. So that's where we've come from. Today, we're at the second of two public hearings, and there may be a need for more, depending on how things go. We'll take all the comments we hear back or here tonight, and we heard yesterday and provide context and response to them to council. And then at that time, council can either choose to give the documents second reading and thereby approving them or make edits. And then any substantive edits that change the meaning or the intent of the documents would require another round of public hearings. Once the documents are approved and all is good there, they go to the province for review. In Nova Scotia, we have statements of provincial interest and the documents need to meet those. Once the province signs off on that, they are in effect and the municipality issues permits in compliance with the new documents. So I'll go through the highlights of the documents, I'll try and be relatively quick. But one thing I should note, and I didn't make a point in noting this yesterday, but I should have. Is that there's this concept in, in planning in Nova Scotia called non-conforming uses and non-conforming structures. And what that means is that we have legal protections in the Municipal Government Act. For things that legally existed when you changed the rules. So if, you know, the term people usually use is grandfathering. That's a, it's legally recognized in the municipal government act. So if, if there's a, if we change the zoning on a property and, you know, what was there wouldn't still be, wouldn't be allowed in the new documents. We don't go and shut them down. As long as they legally existed, they continue to legally exist and have the protections from the municipal government act. So this is for things going forward. So in terms of key highlights, we have an updated vision within the plan. I won't read it all out, we're here to hear from you tonight, but there it is on the screen. And then in terms of the approach to planning. You know, fundamentally, what we've done is kind of identified the communities of Queens into one of three categories. The urban serviced areas, the hamlets and the rural development areas. The urban service, then there's a map that shows which are which. The urban serviced areas are the areas of higher density of development. And they have the full range of municipal infrastructure or a lot of the pieces of municipal infrastructure, sidewalks. Sewer water, or the potential to have those things relatively easily and affordably. And they tend to have a wide range of commercial services. So that's Liverpool, Brooklyn, Milton and Caledonia. That's relatively unchanged from the 2009 documents. We tweaked the boundaries a little bit here and there, but that concept comes forward from 2009. The major change from the current planning documents is the introduction of hamlets. So these are areas that are local service and cultural centers. The, they have the potential for municipal infrastructure, you could see maybe sidewalks or something like that. They tend to have a moderate range of housing and commercial options. But really, the way I like to think of them is that you know when you're in them. You know, there's a community there and it's a hub and it serves the, the surrounding area. So those hamlets are Beach Meadows, Greenfield, Hunts Point slash White Point, Mill Village, Port Midway, Port Mattoon and Somerville. And recognizing, you know, as much as they all have a similar role for their, for their areas, they do differ. And we've tried to recognize that in the application of the zoning. So you got somewhere where like Mill Village that has a very commercial core. And then kind of more residential areas on the, on the outside. Somewhere like Southwest Port Mattoon is purely residential, there's no commercial component there. And then somewhere like Greenfield is much more mixed with a, you know, mix of commercial, residential, some industrial. And the expectations in these communities are different, so we reflected that in the zoning as best as possible. Then everywhere that's not one of those two other categories is the rural development areas. These are areas characterized by resource development, recreation and housing. Certainly lots of rural housing, but primarily along existing highways and roads. And some limited commercial services. And in these areas, you see very little in terms of municipal infrastructure. Garbage collection and stuff, but not roads, water, that kind of thing. Other key highlights from the environmental perspective. We've implemented a minimum coastal elevation for development, recognizing the risks of sea level rise. The current 2009 documents have a water course buffer distance from water courses that you need to develop, that's being maintained. In recognizing that, you know, erosion is a risk in certain areas, there is now a proposed coastal buffer. Starting at 30 meters, but then that can be reduced with site-specific information. So you know, if you're on a hard granite coast that doesn't erode, then it's possible to get that number reduced. The documents recommend the Dark Skies Initiative. Kedumakujik is a registered dark sky preserve. And there's a lot of effort in the particularly in North Queens around that initiative. Documents recognize that and, and promote that. We continue to recognize and protect conservation lands that were identified in 2009 documents. And continue and have actually expanded the protective zonings around the lakes. From an infrastructure point of view. Making really clear policy statements about where central and water and sewer are appropriate. They're important services, but they're also from a municipal sustainability point of view, financially expensive. So we want to make the best of them where they exist and really be careful about where, where they're expanded to. The new documents clearly recognize renewable energy, wind, solar and make allowances for them. And they continue to protect the municipal water supply. From a transportation perspective, there's clear limits on new public roads. Again, these are something that whenever a new road is created, they end up owned by the municipality these days. And that's a cost and a maintenance burden that the municipality takes on. So we want to be strategic about where we allow them. So that's the urban serviced areas, hamlets, highway commercial zone. And then outside of those areas, you know, private roads do the job of, of getting access to people's lots and development. So permitting those in the rural areas and the hamlets and recommending minimum standards for those. The new documents require sidewalks and new public roads. They refine parking standards a little bit, and they make clear allowances for electrical vehicle charging. Housing is a topic that came up a lot, again, diversity, affordability and quality. So the documents take steps in ways that we can through planning to help with that. So the new documents allow for accessory dwellings, things like granny flats and backyard suites or secondary suites, whatever you want to call them. Continue to enable and support of housing options like group living arrangements. Land these communities. A small tweak in the downtown Liverpool area is allowing commercial on the ground floor in the rear. So you'd still have a commercial frontage, but allowing expanded commercial or residential activity in downtown Liverpool. And then wider use of the multiple unit residential zone. So what we've done is actually identified a number of lots primarily in Liverpool. That's in the kind of like the mustard yellow there. Where there's a potential for multi-unit development and made it easier by pre-zoning those lots for that purpose. And so making it easier to go ahead and get permits and do that. From an economic development point of view, recognizing and clearly enabling craft manufacturing, small scale. You know, whether it's small scale furniture making or craft brewing or soap making or whatever it may be. Having a clear place for those in the documents. Continue to have a wide support for agricultural activities. I'll touch on those in more detail, but allowing agriculture, crop-based agriculture, animal-based agriculture. And also the related activities like processing and stuff. And one of the, one of the major tweaks is making it easier to do farm markets. Through the current doc, or through the proposed documents. Similarly, for forestry activities can continue to enable and support those. There's an expanded options for home-based businesses in the rural areas. And then some tweaks to the commercial zoning. From recreation and open space point of view, made it easier for the municipality to get land or cash. For public parks and open spaces, part of the subdivision process. Made it easier for parks to be developed. And then this is another topic that's had a, had a lot of attention, so I'll go into a little more detail. Implementing some basic controls for recreational vehicles. So the current 2009 documents are silent on them. So there isn't, and they fall in a funny place of being vehicles, they're not, it's kind of fuzzy from a land use point of view. So right now, there are no controls on recreational vehicles until you get to a scale where you could be argued to be a campground. And then, and then, and then the land use bylaw would come into effect and control you. So what we've done is clearly defined when you become a campground. Set that threshold in the documents and then for things that are below that. Recognizing that people have visitors come, you know, down from Ontario or whatever and stay for a weekend or a week. The documents are very clear that anything less than 14 days or without structures and, and without, you know, it's just, we're not going to get involved. Above for, if an RV is going to be in place for above 14 days. It's treated kind of like a dwelling. You need to get a permit, you have to meet setbacks, you gotta have an approved sewage disposal system. And you, you can have up to two per lot, which is the same density that's allowed for dwellings. And that can be, you know, traded with dwellings, so two dwellings or one dwelling in an RV or two RVs. So that's the approach that's proposed for that. Backyard livestock, or sort of livestock. This came up a lot yesterday, so again, I'm going to go into a little depth here. So as Mayor Norman mentioned, the planning documents that have been in place since 2009. Do currently regulate livestock. And there are only two categories in that document. If you're over 10 animal units, which is about 10 horses or 250 chickens or something like that. You are intensive livestock, and if you're below that, your homes, your, your household livestock. And household livestock is only permitted in limited areas. So those rules exist now and have for the past 13 years. And we recognize that, you know, there is a movement towards. Things like backyard chickens, people wanting to, to support themselves, get back to the land, food security. So one of the things the proposed documents do is implement a new category, which is backyard livestock. And this allows for up to five fowl and rabbits anywhere, no permit. So this is urban areas, rural areas, hamlets, anywhere, no restrictions on where, no permits. As drafted, roosters wouldn't count as backyard livestock. Again, that's not a change from the current documents. They, it's, roosters are treated the same as they are in the current documents. And the other requirement is that they be enclosed, and that just means not allowed to run at large. From a household livestock point of view, again, this is a category in the existing documents. It's permitted in most rural zones, we've kept that approach. To be honest and fair, there, there are a couple of places that could be affected by this. Areas that are now hamlets had, had previously been rural. So those areas had previously been able to have household livestock and would not be able to, under the proposed drafts. However, they would still have that backyard livestock option. You need to have 4,000 meters squared per animal unit. That's not a change from the current documents. And that's not per animal per se, certain animals, you know, like, that's like one horse or one cow is an animal unit. But 25 chickens is an animal unit, so it just depends on the scale and, and needs of the animals. One new change that we've proposed, and again, this makes it easier for people. Is, you know, we recognize particularly in rural areas. You might own multiple lots together, or you might lease a lot from a neighbor. The documents recognize this now and allow you to consider collections of lots. For the purpose of meeting that 4,000 square feet. So if you have three lots all next to each other, and they were each, or say, let's say we had four lots next to each other. And they're each 1,000 square meters. In the old documents, none of them would be able to be eligible for household livestock. In the new documents, they'd all be considered as one 4,000 square foot lot and you'd qualify for that. There are a few rules new about distances from water courses, off-site wells and off-site dwellings for the manure storage. And again, this isn't really a change, there's provincial legislation about this that requires livestock to be fenced in. The new, the new documents are just really clear about that and reference that act. And then intensive livestock, same deal, again, it's above 10 animal units. There's no change in where it's permitted. Other than the fact that certain areas, the hamlets have been removed from those rural zones. And the only other change is a little harder to do mink, the number of mink considered in an animal unit has been decreased. From a culture and heritage perspective, providing flexibility for registered heritage properties and recognizing and allowing artisan uses. Continuing to support a wide range of community uses like schools and stuff, and making it a little easier by making it permitted in a wider range of zones. And then we've gone through the documents, re-formatted them, tried to make certain processes easier. Dare I say it, reduce the red tape. And a couple of new tools to streamline things for the municipality. I think that is my presentation, you've heard enough from me, this is a public hearing to hear from you, so I'm going to stop talking. And hand it back to Mayor Norman.
Thank you, Ian. And here comes the challenging part. So I have had seen a hand from Noel. So Noel, my assistant is going to allow you to unmute. And then I see Meg. So Noel, is Noel done? I know, we can hear you. Your name and your civic address, please, Noel.
My name is Noel Smale, and my civic address is 97 Brooklyn Shore Road, Brooklyn.
You know?
Yep, yep, 97 Brooklyn Shore.
Yeah, we have it.
Okay. My big concerns are is, a lot of these, I know you say that since 2019. But particularly when you look at the, the RVs. A lot of people bought land down in, or in So Shore for the, for, you know, recreational purposes and all the rest. And now it, it just seems like you guys are really coming down on people. When it's a time that housing is, you know, it's important. So sometimes, you know, people bought down here and, you know, they, they bought now to look towards the future. And the 14-day threshold seems a little, seems a little low, especially when you could have family come down for three weeks. You know, like most people that have RVs have other friends that have them and visit at each other's places. And you, and you guys said 14 days of a, of a, of a whole calendar year. That seems a little, little unjustified and far-fetched. Now you're asking people to go through city approvals and rush in septic systems. When we could just call Winchester's before and, you know, have your, have your tanks pumped out every week or, or two at the most. And, you know, you have the receipts there to prove that you're doing it, so you're not doing anything shady, like dumping in a barrel or anything. You know, I'm just worried about the approach on some of these things that the town's taking. And it seems like you're more wanting to take an approach of the city, when we're not the city out here. And, you know, we're only going to grow so much and we can only, and we can only grow so much. And I'm worried about just how fast-paced that we're changing, even though that we started these talks in 2018. No one's been able to come out for the last two years and really. You know, make a meeting and, you know, it's not their fault that they've been scared and feared into staying at home and not interacting with people. And, you know, I think we need more consultation, I really do. I think, I, I think there's, there's a lot more voices in the community. Like I only heard about this a day and a half ago. Like I only heard about this a day and a half ago. I've, I've had almost no time to read through the new regional planning strategy guide. And the bylaws to see all, all the changes and compare them back to the 2009. Or which I would say is our current version. Again, where are you going to get your enforcement? You've already said that you're cutting staff. So you're going to put this more on the onus of, you know, your, your neighbor. Calling you in and now you're, it's just more division in the community. It's, it wouldn't be better to work, work together and instead of trying to ask people to help divide the community. We've been divided enough for the last two years. It's time for healing, not more division. Again, you know. We just gotta look at how we can work, work more together than, you know, keep each other apart. But if I own a house and I own an RV, that typically, that's the way that this is written. I'm not allowed another RV on my property. So what happens if I have friends, friends that want to come down? I know that you say, oh, there's two RVs a lot. Well, that's a vacant lot. And, and now again, on those vacant lots, you're demanding people get. Well, pull out $5,000 or $10,000 right now for, for a septic system. And last time I checked, the governments have been demanding people to. Not work for the last two years. So where do people get all this money? Right now we're in a, we're in a crisis with just inflation. And it's, it's, it's everywhere and we've really got to, we really got to step back like. When this, when is all this going to even be implemented? In, in, like, what's our timeframe here for, for any of this? What's the timeframe for people to get adjusted? How far does grandfathering go for any of these new rules? You know, your, your new shipping container rules, there is a lot of good things that people can do with shipping containers. And make them aesthetically pleasing and you're, you're trying to shut all that development mentality right out. You know, like you, you guys aren't, I don't think anybody's really thinking this through as in. You know, this is why we all live in Queens because we love the way Queens is and that's why we're here. And we shouldn't feel like we're losing everything that we've, you know, had and grown up to have and grown to love. And just to have it all changed away and to squish people's ambitions on certain things is just, you know, it's unjustified. That's my piece and I, I thank you everybody for listening and. You know, let's just get together as a community and figure out the best ways to move, but not modernize ourselves. Continue with what we have and cherish what we have and don't give up our freedoms with what we already have. Right now we have more freedoms and what you guys want to implement, you want to take freedoms away from the people. And I would just really wish you guys would double think what you're trying to do. Let people be free on their own land. And just don't hold people back and that's what you're doing. And this isn't the time for that. It just shows more division and mistrust in the government. Listen to your constituents. You know, we're the people here. This is, this is the voice. This is the community that we all love and we want to see grow. But taking away people's rights and freedoms on their lands with what they can do and what they should do. We should all step back and not let that be the focus of, of our government. The government, when the government gets larger, people get smaller and the people get smaller. And we're already economically dysfunctioned down here. Oh, it hurts everybody. So, you know, thank you for, very much for listening. I got a director's meeting at the Marina I'm stepping into. So thanks very much. Yeah, I'll have a good night.
Thank you, Noel. And the purpose of this meeting is to listen to your comments. And we stepped, majority of council stepped into this position in the middle of all this. And we're just sort of. In the middle of it. So we are listening. And next up I see Meg.
I hope everyone can hear me.
We can hear you fine.
Great. So I live in Hunts Point, 6976 Highway 3 in Hunts Point. And I'm just finishing my PhD on food security, so I'm going to comment on that. So yeah, I just have a couple of things to say. So I'm not sure if everyone's aware, but the right to food is recognized at the international level. It's enshrined in the International Covenant on Economic, Social and Cultural Rights and Canada is a signatory on this covenant. When I heard that Queens County was considering this, I just wanted to, to say something and, you know, I've owned agricultural land in various provinces. I worked with farmers across Canada for many years. And I just want to maybe say something agricultural focused for people in attendance that maybe haven't had a rooster before. So a rooster is fundamental to the production of new chickens, which means eggs. And so when we ask ourselves what came first, the chicken or the egg? Well, the rooster actually in a way. Roosters are also protective mechanism for flocks. They're a mainstay for fertilization for small farms. They act in the off season on farms as sort of mini tractors. They fertilize. It's a very well-known organic method. To grow vegetables in this way with chickens and definitely with roosters. My acreage is three acres. I just gave an extra rooster I had to someone with 13 acres. We were producing eggs. I'm sharing those eggs with neighbors. Eggs are one of the other things that actually allowed me to meet people when I moved to Nova Scotia. That I could never have met otherwise. Really, the socioeconomic benefits of food security are just so vast, I think. They're almost unquantifiable. So I think we have a choice in front of us. We can either incentivize people to grow food. To understand it, to support each other in a really caring manner. Or we can police people's basic food security endeavors. Really to do what generations of Canadians have done here with no encumbrances in the past. I have another neighbor on about 10 acres. She had three sheep. She's had three sheep for decades there. They're really special to her. They're special to me and we met through these sheep. The amount of acreage that they're on is totally completely sufficient with using any agricultural metric. You want to use to evaluate it. Any metric, of course, maybe except the social metric of someone just not wanting it because it doesn't. Maybe suit their personal fancy or vision of the neighborhood and maybe their economic vision for the neighborhood. Really though, I think fundamentally to erode these agricultural rights is just unacceptable. On the enforcement front, all this will do is increase the likelihood of neighbors ratting on other neighbors. I agree with Noel about the, this also increasing people's distrust in government, which is right now at an all time high. It's socially divisive, it's unfair jurisdictionally, it undermines people, the ability of residents to engage in healthy agricultural processes. And as I said, I think it actually also fundamentally violates a federal covenant our government signed at the international level.
Good job.
Thank you, Meg. We're supposed to have everyone muted. And yesterday at the public hearing, I reminded people that it's important to be neutral. And that, I know I just heard a good job and Meg, you did a great job. But if there was someone in our audience who didn't agree with you. Then that good job and all that applauding may make them not want to commit. So if you're not muted. You should be and just, that's anyway. So Francis. I see your hand up next.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I, I wrote to council the other day and.
Okay, so Francis, I'm gonna interrupt you. I need your civic address.
Civic address, yeah. I, I don't reside in Queens, but I, but I have a property in Queens.
Okay, so where, I do the civic address to your property?
Yeah, I'm going to, to that, 70 Moger Road.
Thank you.
I just, I just wanted to speak in this forum because I think. I can't assume that the email that I, that I sent got to you. So I thought maybe it's better to come to the public forum and raise my, my issue. Personally, I, my wife and I bought a piece of land in, in Western, Western Head. 18 acres and we had plans to, to, to build a glamping site there. Plans which we had researched and sort of figured out that it's allowable to, to build that kind of development in that, on that piece of land. Now with the current changes, that, I guess, that idea becomes. Non-conforming to a certain extent. If, if, if the new, if the new draft land use bylaw is, is approved. And so my request was that, similar to how other. Sorry about that.
See, this one, this one's not muted there.
Thank you. That's okay. Similar to how other properties that have similar development. Like we, we proposed to do and we've already started development. They've been given resource zoning and I would appreciate if council and. Planning advisory committee would consider doing the same. I think it's, it's equitable. It's. If, if we, if we want Queens to, to attract tourists, to attack, to attack business, I think. Quashing somebody who's already expressed an interest. Going forward with their plans might not be the best way to go. So. If, if that can be received favorably or depreciated. Now. Just referring to that and thinking about as a. And as a municipality, I. I, I live in Mahombe and we're going through a similar process as you folks and, and I'm very involved in that process. And one thing I would say, I'll probably share in my experience is that I, I would not expect. The region of Queens as a region to, to adopt the same kind of approach Mahombe would. Because of the way Mahombe is. And so there's some elements about. About the draft municipal planning strategy and bylaws that borrow heavily. From larger metropolitan areas and I think Noel mentioned, alluded to some of those things and so. I would, I guess, as fellow municipal councillors and fellow municipal leaders is. Deliberate and think about. Do you really need? To change the rules, especially in the rural areas. I can, I can relate to the, to the Liverpool and Brooklyn and more dense, densely populated areas trying to. Introduce more, I guess, rules so that they can be good neighborliness. But in the rural areas, I would advocate for. I guess more leeway so that people can be creative. We want our region to be more populated. We want our region to. To flourish and that can only happen if there's room for people to, to do different things that can be done elsewhere. And the reason, the reason why people come to rural areas in Nova Scotia is to. Some, some, somehow get, get away from the hustle and bustle of metropolitan areas. And they can only do that if there's a little bit more leeway in terms of the kinds of development that developments that they can do. And that, I'm not saying that you, 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 your lax on your regulations, but a little bit more flexibility rather than. Removing the flexibility. So for instance, in the rural areas. Having tourist accommodations, I think, would be very helpful to ensure that. People can, can think about different ways in which. That can be accommodated. That can address issues like short-term rentals, taking away. Crucial. Homes and affordable homes in the densely populated areas. So if you push that in, in the areas where that, that expansion can happen, then you, you're causing another problem. Into, in your, I guess, more densely populated area. So. Thinking about it from that perspective. Now the last piece, just generally as a, as a, as a. As a region, I would urge you to think about. Zoning areas around schools. In, in, in some kind of specially protected area whereby, so I, I work in addiction and mental health and. And we know that there's more. Liberalizations of things like cannabis and cannabis consumption and things like that and. I don't know where our current government will go towards, but if we get to a place where. There's legalization of cannabis and sale by folks other than the NSLC. It might be very difficult to envision somebody thinking, well, it might be a very good idea to just go. Next to Liverpool Regional High and set up a. A little, a little bit of, a, a, a little shop that sells cannabis. And so. Ensuring regulations are in place to protect schools and school areas might be a, something that you might want to consider going forward. Those are my comments today. Thank you.
Thank you, Francis. And this is the advantages of these public hearings are to hear. Hear those great comments and I think I saw a lot of head nodding, so it's. Very useful. So another hand is. No more hands? Yes, I see a hand, Victoria Pearl. There you go.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Darlene. First, I just, I, I just want to say.
I know your name and I know where you live.
Yes, I, I'm, I'm sorry. I forgot that piece. 339 Mill Village East Road. Vicky Conrad, Victoria, please. First, I, I, I just want to say thank you so much for hosting this public hearing by Zoom. It has been definitely challenging, I'm sure, for all of you moving forward with this process. Back in 2009, I was a part of the citizen engagement as a, as a. A person that sat with the planning advisory committee for a couple of years anyway, where we went around from community to community. To, to involve. Public engagement. As, as everybody was moving forward to. Looking at the best ways to plan for Queens. And I respect the process. I, I, I think what's been challenging for. Council has been getting the public really engaged in the process and what has been. Already established and now how we move forward. I, I, I think there's some concern as to the. Our future is so unstable as to how we're moving forward. So planning always needs to be changing. And so if we had that crystal ball to say. Well, okay, what does our food security look like? And do the plans that we have in place or do the bylaws that we have in place. Kind of reflect what could be possibly coming to us in the future in terms of more unstable. Food security issues or the high cost of, of food issues and that sort of thing. And even in housing, you know, when I was listening to, I believe it was Noel speaking. Was it Noel speaking from, from the, yeah, Noel speaking from the Brooklyn area and. You know, he raises some really legitimate concerns that if, as a property owner, he has an RV on his property. And someone is staying there or perhaps there's two, perhaps there's housing issues around the folks that are residing in, in those. Those RVs. I, so I think moving forward, you know, it, it might be. Conducive for the planning advisory committee to kind of look in that crystal ball to see what could be changing and therefore. Adopt or change some of the more restrictive or the more. Perhaps not restrictive bylaws, but they could be restrictive in the future. And so if this is a revolving document, which I feel that it is and it always has been. Shifting and planning as, as, as changes, not only in Queens County, but in the province as a whole or is in Canada as a whole. That I'm, I'm hoping that the planning advisory committee or the council will remain flexible. In its ability to adopt to whatever is happening. In the future. You know, what are a few futuristic needs are. And I think it should be clear, you know, now that Mill Village has been. Designated as a hamlet, it was really hard for me to look at those maps to see where the rural zones are. And as some may be familiar, here at 339, we've, we have had. Both intensive farming operations and lower intensity farmer operations here in our property. And, and, and we've been a registered firm. So for me to look. At, at some of the concerns that were raised, raised over the last couple of days. I had to go, whoa, I better look to see if there's any changes coming. For, for my husband and I. I had to go, whoa, I better look to see if there's any changes coming for, for my husband and I, who have been farming for a number of years. I was pleasantly surprised that not a lot had changed other than the designations of the zones. But it was hard for me to distinguish where the rural zones were in and around the hamlet of Mill Village. So maybe if the maps are a little bit clearer, or if there's at least maybe a side note to say, this is where you can kind of zoom in a little bit closer to see where those rural zoned areas are, or commercial zoned areas and that sort of thing. But I think overall, I'm pleasantly okay with, with the document because it does reflect on where we were in 2009 and the changes are not as severe as, as some of us thought. You know, in the last couple of days, when there were a lot of comments out on social media and I had a lot of calls myself going, Vicky, did you see this argument and, you know, what's going on here? But again, I, I think it's a document that needs to change or be flexible as, as the changes in the world occur. You know, whether it's food security issues that get more severe, I think we need to be considerate of, you know, some of the flexibilities that we may have to look at going forward. And right now, they're kind of, you know, rigid, these are the regulations, these are what we're confined. And, yeah, so not sure if, yeah, I don't have anything more to say. Thank you, Darlene, other than it's a lot of work for all of you. We have to be respectful of all of the new neighbors coming in as well. There's all kinds of people moving in from all over the world with different expectations about, you know, what our living conditions are next to each neighbor and, and we have to be respectful of that as well. And including the environment. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Victoria. As you know, we are governed by the Municipal Government Act on how flexible our planning strategies and documents can be and how much stuff has to be right on paper and the whole process of what it takes to evolve and change. But you're correct, they are, it is a living document. And we also are having many new friends and neighbors coming in. Food security is important, so your comments were well heard. So if you wish to speak, if you look on your screen, you will see a little hand waving. You'll see a little hand that, this just looks like a little hand like this. And it's like reactions. So at the bottom of your screen, you will look and to the far right, there's a thing that says apps and then there's reactions and it's got a little smiley face on it. So if you wish to speak, just go into the reaction button. And if you push the reaction button, you'll see this, a thumbs up, like any of those things will get you to, to me. So I just need to see identifier and, or go like this, or just raise your hand and then raise hand. So you'll see the button you push and raise hand. So it's a two-step process, or if I go through your, these windows, I've got a help here on my side. He can go through the windows if anyone's just going like this and we can see you, then we know to acknowledge you. So Steve, do you see anyone?
Deanna Hughes.
Deanna Hughes.
Can I, am I, am I on?
You are, we can hear you.
Okay. Good, good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor and distinguished councillors and attendees, I'm Deanna Hughes from 467 Forest Point Loop, just outside of Greenfield, Nova Scotia, on the beautiful Pond Hook Lake. I am speaking tonight as President of the Forest Point Landowners Association on behalf of our directors and residents. I have a written statement and I'm not very comfortable in this role. I don't do this very often, but I will try to give it my best shot. Anyway, thank you, thank you. During the past two years, our Forest Point Landowner Society has taken steps to try to ensure that the changes to the new municipal planning strategy and the land use bylaw, which are currently in the final stages of adoption, that's what we're doing here tonight, accurately reflect the needs and desires of the people within our community. Forest Point Loop is home to permanent families, retirees, seasonal cottage users, which is reflective pretty much of the zone that we're in, which is now the the Lake Shore Limited Zone, that's what we're now called, or proposed to be called. We have, our society received about overwhelming support of 93% of our residents to try to limit development within the Lake Shore Zone. So I'm going to speak to that tonight. We understand that it's important to allow for a variety of rural land uses. However, it is equally important to understand and consider to prevent potential conflicts between incompatible uses. Therefore, I'd like to draw attention to the most concerning land uses for our residents on Forest Point Loop. And the first thing that we're going to talk about is permanent RV parking sites. I'm not talking about people coming down with their families and enjoying RVs for the summer. We're talking about permanent sites that people are using for habitation. So we're asking for greater clarification within the proposed land used bylaw. And it says Section 713 recreational vehicle parking sites. It says we contend the land use bylaw should clearly indicate that RV usage is restricted for seasonal occupancy only. And the term permanent, it should not mean permanent residency, even though it talks about permanent sites. We feel that this change is required to respect the safety and the welfare of people and for the protection of both people and their property and should be applied in zones that are allowing permanent RV sites. In the proposed MPS, Section 48, it says, RV includes the following statements, that RVs can also be used in lieu of a cabin or cottage on seasonal properties. So this would indicate to us, the reader of that, that they are to be considered only as seasonal accommodation. It also states that councils through the land use bylaw establish standards for regulating the use of and to accommodate and minimize the impact of permanent and semi-permanent recreational vehicles. Again, as stated in the proposed Queen's MPS, recreational vehicles are a form of vacation accommodation. The Nova Scotia Tourist Accommodation Act also defines recreational vehicles means a vehicular type unit primarily designed as temporary living accommodation for recreational camping or travel use, that either it has its own motive of power or is mounted on or drawn by another vehicle. When I looked across Nova Scotia to see what other municipalities were doing, we found that Hans County, that is going through a very similar process is that, that their staff, planning and development staff, in their background report dated November 6, 2021, recommended the following in their evaluation of recreational vehicles to their council. RVs are not constructed for four-season year-round living in winter climates. Winter conditions may lead property owners to make modifications to the RVs to keep them warm. That means including wood stoves, including heaters that are not supposed to be in there. That is a potential for a safety hazard. Number two, these modifications, they say, may lead to safety issues if they're not completed by qualified professionals. Recreational vehicles are not built to the same standard as a permanent season housing. And number three, they say, there are no provisions in the National Building Code of Canada to be able to issue a permanent building permit for these structures. Therefore, staff are not recommending their use as permanent housing. Our directors are in complete agreement with these statements. The constructions of RVs is not built to standards that are conducive to winter weather. And owners should not be encouraged to use them for the purpose of year-round alternative housing. Also to this end, the community of Block House in Lunenburg County has restricted the occupancy time of RVs in their land use bylaw amended in June 8, 2016. They state that recreational vehicles or campers may be used for the temporary accommodation of private guests with no requirement for a development permit, as long as it does not occur for longer than a four-month period within a calendar year. Nova Scotia has two federal parks, both Kegy and Kate Bratton National Park restrict camping to seasonal dates of May to October. We have 20 provincial campgrounds for within Queens County. They also restrict the usage for RV sites and camping from May to early June and close late September to mid-October. The South Shore of Nova Scotia also has between 12 and 15 private and municipal campgrounds. They have service sites for all manner of RVs, but again, these are restricted to a seasonal timeframe. Once again, we believe that not to include a timeline deterrent or use the word seasonal, which they've already had in the MPS as seasonal, in lieu of a seasonal cottage, to review occupancy in the entirety of Queens County of the irresponsible on the part of the municipality and have potentially dangerous consequences if left unchecked. And we ask Queens Council to implement these changes in the proposed land use bylaw. It is a good, a grave concern for our residents and our directors wanted to address this. We also have a second to address is, and this is for our limited, again, our limited lake area. As mentioned in our opening statement, which I actually bypassed to kind of keep this short, there are limited lake. So originally, under the 2009 zones had five uses. When our association put forward our concerns about that, they said that we would now have a new zone and it would be eight allowable uses. And that has been extended now, the Lake Shore Limited Development has been extended to 12 allowable uses. So this has caused some concern from our residents and also our directors and our residents committee. We are concerned that these allowable uses of 12 are now going to be detracting the character of our lakeside community, but are also immeasurably going to impact the quality of life of our residential neighborhoods. By the addition of, these will have an impact on our private road. We provide all seasonal maintenance, the upkeep, where the sole responsibility are the residents of Forest Point Loop. This includes yearly grading, plowing, brushing, and the addition of extra gravel and things such as culverts. This is very important because this is, we do not, we pay taxes to the county and we receive very limited. We don't get able to be able to take care of snow clearing, we do that on our own. We came again, our own, streetlights, we don't get, we don't get garbage pickup. So we take care of all of this on our own. But by adding these additional uses, that is going to add a lot of extra, could possibly add, I wouldn't say it will, but it could possibly add a lot of bigger impact for the cost of maintenance and insurance on our road that was only intended for the private use of our residents and guests and not public roads. Also with the increased traffic becomes a concern for the safety of pedestrians, including children and pets, as well as the increased noise and emissions. By the addition of only 20% home-based businesses in our area, that would be actively recruiting customers and clients. This has the potential to nearly double the vehicle trips on Forest Point Loop year-round. Our calculations are done by the co-chair of our resident committee, who is a professional engineer. And this doesn't even take into the consideration of the added uses of community centers, small option homes, recreational uses. In his response to our statement of concern above, Mr. McLeod stated that the adoption of new planning documents would not negate our ability to enforce any private restrictive covenants which may apply to a property. We interpret this statement to mean that our society's concerns regarding changes to Queen's bylaws that we are not in favor of basically become our issue to enforce. We understand that the residents of Forest Point Loop have made a clear effort to make Queens County aware of our position with two detailed submissions as well as ongoing queries. And it is clear that there's a disagreement in regard to our expectations and these new bylaws. So we wanted to, we thank you for taking your time this evening. And we respectfully submit that the owners may be now on Queens Council to find, to help us find a satisfactory solution to this issue that does not disenfranchise the taxpayers in our area and the Forest Point Landowners Society. So I thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Deanna, and you did a perfect job of that, so I knew you.
Thank you very much.
Do we see a hand? Do I see a wave? Oh, I see Jillian. Jillian.
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, Jillian, yes, I can hear you perfect.
Great, thanks. I live at 291 Central Port Mattoon Road. I'm not here in my capacity as a federal public servant, but I'm unable to remove the tag from my name. It seems like renaming may have been disabled, but I'm here as a private citizen and homeowner. So I wanted to start off by thanking Noel and Meg for their contributions, which I wholeheartedly agree with. And I really appreciate their thoughtful insight. My main concern here echoes what Noel had picked up on in regard to that there has not been adequate engagement on this issue. I don't believe it would be responsible to move forward without additional hearings. I think we need more time to understand and communicate the concerns of the community. I understand there's confusion regarding the 2009 plans and not everything is new. However, there are a number of new things that are significantly different and will have serious implications for people's livelihoods and as noted in the presentation, which I appreciated. As we saw in the hearings yesterday and today, we obviously have a number of individuals that are concerned about these proposed changes and we're simply unaware. It's the government's responsibility to make sure they are reaching people in an effective manner before making decisions that will affect them. And this hasn't really been the case here. Given we've been suffering through a pandemic the last few years and have only just begun moving forward to a new normal, which is still largely unknown, it's reasonable that we would need more time to understand and discuss these issues. And I think it would be irresponsible of council to try to push something through at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jillian, and I think I echo the voices of all of council who were completely unaware of the concerns about this. The unfortunate thing is, and it will put a huge halt on everything, according to the Municipal Government Act, because we have held our first reading between the time, the first reading or notification of the first reading is held, any development permits, which basically mean any building permits, any development permits, we issue for 150 days after that first notification, which we have done. They have to say that they cannot contradict what is in the proposed documents. And that is going to, I mean, it's going to slow down everything for a while. And, you know, council is going to have to listen and decide what we do about that. So that unfortunately is the place we find ourselves in right now because we've given notification for the next 150 days, any development permit that our development officer issues, and this is provincial law, cannot contradict anything in these new proposed documents. And so, but it sounds like we're going to be having more public engagement sessions, probably. So we're just going to have a 150 days, five months of anyway, but it's better, I guess, to take the time and do it right than just plow into things. So we, because I've heard some pretty interesting comments in the last few days. So I need a hand, I see an iPad too. Oh, there you are. iPad too. We can hear you.
Oh, you can hear me. My name is Scott Winters, I reside in 203 Forest Point Loop, La Belle. And I'm the co-chair of the Forest Point Landowners Residence Committee. Deanna has already spoken with regards to a few things that our residents have brought to your attention. But I'd like to read through this document tonight that I prepared. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and councillors for the First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and councillors for the opportunity to speak tonight. We'd also like to thank Mike McLeod, and I think I'll add in there Ian Watson for replying to our questions over the past year. The residents and owners of properties of Forest Point Loop and Gulch Road have submitted previous documentation that does not support permanent RV parking sites. Level one home-based businesses, community centers, small option homes, or the expansion non-conforming use within the area. I recognize that elected officials may not want to make exceptions by creating a new zone for our area or removing these additional usages for the Lake Shore Limited Development Zone. However, last year, as Deanna's pointed out, over ninety percent of property owners in our area voted against RV parking sites in various other uses, which were not in line with the existing R seven seasonal residential zone or our restrictive covenants. We are asking elected officials to recognize the voice of our people in our area and make an exception and address the changes to the land use bylaw. Making these changes shouldn't be a substantial endeavor. Knowing what I know now, you already have your first reading done, so I didn't, I wasn't really aware of the procedure there. We, we don't want to deal. Making the changes shouldn't be a substantial endeavor. It is not that we want to be difficult. We don't want to deal with the potential problems associated with the increase in allowable uses, which are vastly different from the restrictive covenants we all agreed to when purchasing our properties. As stated above, with the proposed addition of the greater land uses, our committee has a very real concern regarding the impact to our community in terms of significant increase in traffic and the added stress on the infrastructure of our private road. Like most of the roads surrounding Ponok and Malaga Lake, our road is a single lane gravel road, which requires constant yearly maintenance. The expenses for increased maintenance such as seasonal winter plowing, spring grading, and continued yearly application of Class A gravel will undoubtedly be impacted by the addition of increased use that is associated with the new land use bylaw and therefore add additional costs to, to be paid by our residents in road maintenance fees. Also, if the municipality votes to adopt the current draft of the land use bylaws, it will be encouraging the use of an RV to be used as permanent residence. For a certain portion of the population, the municipality will be placing more citizens at greater health and safety risk by allowing them to live in a risk, higher risk in substandard accommodation. And some of this was brought up with Diana, Deanna, and some of her research. There are recognized safety issues with regards to living in RVs during the winter months if adaptations are made to the unit in order to increase heating potential. The municipality would be looking at creating lower, the municipality should be looking at creating lower cost housing for these citizens and not allowing the practice to continue. I understand the municipality doesn't have jurisdiction over motor vehicles, but you can set parameters for temporary accommodation use of an RV. Permanent accommodations of RVs is already occurring in the Malaga area. Elected officials have an opportunity to make the necessary changes to this legislation. Let's be clear, when a tragedy occurs, it's only a matter of time before it does. With a family living in an RV, the municipality and its elected officials are part of the problem by not having acceptable legislation, parameters, definition for temporary accommodation, and the ability for bylaw enforcement. This is why we want the municipality to not allow any RV parking sites for Forest Point Loop and Gulch Road. As well as other areas of Malaga, as mentioned previously. Please respect the overwhelming wishes of our community. Thank you for the time tonight.
And thank you, thank you, Scott. Who's next? Do I see a hand?
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm on the phone and I actually don't know how to.
Oh, I can, I can hear you, so just keep on speaking.
Hey, my name is John Scanlon. I have property in Port Medway Road, nine three four Port Medway Road. And I have uh, an interest in a much larger property in, in uh, Lunenburg County. So I recently purchased the last two years this property. Love the area, love the community, been traveling in Nova Scotia back and forth for about six years. Trying to make my home there. I'm an animal lover. I fed chickens, I raised sheep. I breed a very, very rare uh, breed of Newfoundland ponies, which uh, Nova Scotia has very few of. I received an email from Newfoundland pony owner in Amherst the other day that these bylaws potentially could be changed and asked me if I knew what was going on. I didn't. So uh, I apologize, but I didn't get a chance to read the proposal. But my comments are, I'll try and make them short and sweet. And hopefully you can understand what I'm saying. But a lot of people from outer province um, enjoy Nova Scotia. We love the people. We love the way things are. As one of the previous speakers mentioned, you know, this is a, a lot of folks are moving from the the city to enjoy the country and especially your province. And as I say, I've been traveling back and forth for a number of years. And uh, purchased the property for a couple of good reasons. I only have a couple of acres. I have a lot of chickens back here in Ontario and as soon as the uh, I wouldn't mind having the opportunity to have a few chickens, but I don't think I will. Because I've had enough of the chickens, but not to say that nobody needs them. I have a big interest in agriculture. And um, some of the previous speakers.
Oh, she's back, she's back. Mayor Norman, you're muted.
I'm muted? No.
No, sorry, you're not muted. The mayor's muted. She's back. Here you go. Everything froze in this building, so everyone was. Alright, so I need to get my view back, my whole view again.
Uh, it's alright.
Can tell, so the last I heard was you were going to get rid of your chickens. But you had a deep interest in agriculture.
I have one, I have one hen left and she's going to die a natural death. But uh, the place I have in um, in Bridgewater area, we have uh, forty-six chickens there. But in uh, the property I have in Port Medway, I purchased that for a different reason. And, and that's because I, I intend to bring a very rare Newfoundland pony to the South Shore. Which I have a number of here. So this kind of concerns me a little bit because I was assured by, you know, checking the bylaws that I could myself, plus the real estate agent, that I was able to have one or two animals there. However, um, I can, I can bring animals back and forth, but my point is especially the tourism business. I'm not sure if you're considering, or your bylaw changes are considering the tourism. And I listened to previous speakers talking about folks that come and visit with RVs or trailers or whatever you want to call them. Um, and visit your gorgeous beaches. And one of the reasons I moved to Port Medway area is to be close to the beaches. And so will everybody else. So, you know, the issues that you're talking about with RVs and I, I come, a couple of the previous speakers are talking about uh, their own area, I guess. I, I don't know it or understand it, but I, you know, I can see what they're talking about, like not having permanent folks there for a lot of, a lot of time. But please don't discourage folks from coming to the province. Uh, as Noel and others have said, you know, things are tough right now. The last couple of years have been tough on everybody globally. You know, I'm looking to do some building at my place there too, and I can't even find a worker. I was advised by the, you know, the permit department to bring your own. That, that's not a good thing. So, you know, the, the, the less restriction that we have, somebody said, you know, less government, not more. Uh, the easier it's going to be, the more income the province and, and, and the counties, you know, gonna draw, easier it's gonna be on everybody. You know, so I'm on Port Medway Road and love it. I love the, the people, love the neighborhood, I go to Mill Village regularly. And not to mention Liverpool and others. But uh, I know you have a consultant and you have bylaws to deal with and you're, I never heard of this two thousand and nine set of rules either. Uh, but I'm gonna make a point of reading them and paying more attention. Unfortunately, I won't be in your province for another month. Um, so uh, I just want to kick in my two cents. You know, I'm a new person in your neighborhood. I just want to put in my two cents. But uh, you know why I like Nova Scotia? I like it just the way it is. I love the South Shore, uh, Queens County. I've lived, again, I've got property in Lunenburg. Queens County is the place I want to be. I would not like to see many changes. Obviously, you have to make some progression. I see that, I understand that. Place is getting bigger, but every time somebody from outer province moves, moves in there, everybody, everybody gains. You gain pop, you know, population. Especially in the households. Since I started going to Nova Scotia, households have been up forty-five to fifty percent. Everybody wins there, I think. But if you're going to restrict it, that won't last for long. And I know the municipality has to uh, you know, they have to earn the money and, and so on and so forth, so. You know, again, I want to apologize. This is, this is a bit sudden to me. I just realized it was happening. Um, so I'm not totally prepared, but when I am, you'll hear from me again.
And John.
Yes? Yep? Hello?
Okay, no need to hang up. Um, you are like many other people within Queens who are just kind of realizing we've had land use zoning and planning for a long time. And I recognize that, you know, you love Nova Scotia just the way it is and Queens County is beautiful and every councillor here lives here because we choose to live here. But then, you know, over the years, previous councils have heard when some people move into neighborhoods and they do things that are totally against anything that anyone would ever want living or happening in their neighborhood. So how do you find that adjustment to yes, everything's lovely and wouldn't it be great to keep it the way it is without any rules? So planning has to find a way to um, be flexible as, as Ms. Conrad stated, but also people do ask for um, protection sometimes. And this whole thing started because of things that were happening in communities and rural communities that people didn't like. And there were no rules. So maybe the rules are too rigid, maybe there's too much government. I mean, there has to be a middle ground that we can find and live. So anyway, so who's up next?
No, listen, listen, I, I've been involved in, in my cemetery board, my local community center. I've been involved in the co-op board for years and years and years. The job that you folks have is not easy. Nobody should think that you have to strike a balance. Uh, while everybody's interest is not easy. Um, and what you're doing now in terms of listening to people, um, i- is the only way to go. When you listen though, I think the deal is to, you know, dig deep and make those decisions. And, and, and you know what? The community is going to support you, to be honest. They're going to support you. They're going to support the local councillors and the local mayors. That's what they're gonna do. I'm just moving the monkey back to you.
I know. We have to get it right and we want to get it right. Now, Victoria, I see you have your hand up again, but you've already spoken once, so I am going to go to Candace Wigle. So Candace.
Hi, I'm at uh, forty-one William Cross Road in Danesville. Little bit of a background, I have been working with Social Opportunities as well as Acadia Entrepreneur Center regarding starting my own business. For the last few months, uh, since September roughly, I've been working with them. I was going by the land use bylaw of two thousand and nine. In that bylaw, I'm considered zone R five, which, you know, you need to have your development permit for a building to start a business, so on and so forth. And there's really no restrictions regarding the size of your building as long as your lot was bigger than twenty-nine thousand square feet roughly. And didn't exceed over forty percent of your lot. Do, my business idea is a dog daycare slash kennel boarding. And with the new bylaw, in my now, my zone, which would still be considered R five, they have animal shelter, there's a few different ones, or animal care. Under our zone, it's marked as not permitted. When, in the previous one, it was. Not understanding as to what may have changed and why that would be put into the new bylaw. That would definitely like, I would love to have that explained to me at some point or explained more somewheres. Also, on the new bylaw draft for home businesses, it doesn't explain exactly what is that sole proprietorship? Is that incorporated? What is considered a home business? And it also says about level one home base business and a level two home base business. It doesn't explain really what home business would be which one and how would you be considered which one? So I have major concerns and I've been working, like I said, for months. And with this new bylaw, I wouldn't be able to proceed with my dream that I've been wanting to do. So I'm very upset about it and I would love for that to be explained at some point. And that's all I, I have.
Thank you, Candace, for expressing yourself so distinctly. If you ever wish, and I tell people this all the time, my office number is on our website. It's in the phone book. I have a cell number that's listed on the phone book. I invite anyone who ever wants to come into my office or I'll meet them to explain those concerns. Our planning staff will explain why the changes that I cannot, I cannot do that. I was, you know, elected in two thousand and we sort of inherited this process. And this has been a very eye-opener experience, even though as council, we all went through, we spent days with Ian going through these documents and, you know, there hadn't been any complaints. They sounded fine. And um, you know, now, and maybe this is a good thing, and I think it is a good thing that suddenly people are aware of this. Um, so Candace, thank you. Send off an email, dnorman@recentqueens.com, mcmccloud@recentqueens.com. Uh, I don't want to ask you for your phone number here, um, but send off an email or give us a call and we'll get back to you, but I, I don't want to ask for, for emails. Okay, so who's up next? She's already spoken once. Yeah, but you, we have to recognize everyone first. So anyone wishes to speak before I acknowledge a speaker who's already spoken? I remind you, if you wish to speak. um, down at the bottom, right hand, reactions, push the button. Click, click your hand wave and click wave hand. Um, because basically we end our meeting when we're finished our speakers. So if anyone wishes to speak, or if you don't know how to do that, can you do this? So, um, can you scroll through those screens to see if anyone's widely waving? So I guess while we're waiting for anyone, Victoria is back to you. So we're gonna unmute her?
I am muted. There I am. Uh, thank you Mayor, uh, Mayor Norman. Um, and just listening to some of the previous speakers and, um, you know, some very interesting comments. Um, from my, my understanding is that, uh, the region of Queens has a hundred and fifty days or five months to kind of sign off on, um, all of the, uh, proposed amendments. And with that being said, it, uh, it, it sounds like a lot of us haven't been, um, engaged enough over the last, um, two years or so to really keep up to speed with, with what some of those, um, changes have been. So that's, that's a pretty, um, onerous task for the municipalities to start engaging, um, with all of us, uh, to get our comments um, in, in front of council, uh, in a more constructive way, or at least in a more, um, uh, a, a way that we're all understanding. I'm wondering too, how much influence that the province has, um, with the municipality and, and our own bylaws here in the county? Um, how, uh, how we're governed by the provincial, um, regulations and guidelines that they see for land use planning? Um, that, that other layer that, 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 that sits over top of, of all of the municipalities within the province? And so it might be, um, uh, a, a good to, to have some sort of preamble so that residents have an understanding of what the provincial guidelines are, um, over top of, of, of the municipal structure um, for bylaws and, and land use po- um, planning. Um, getting back to that flexibility, over the last two years, you know, most of us have seen how much um, change and how quick change can happen in our world. Um, whether it's through a pandemic or whether it's through perhaps a financial crisis that could be looming. Um, we, we see what's happening in the Ukraine and Russia right now and how unstable our times are. And, and that, even though we're far removed from what's happening, um, getting back to that flexibility, I think that our, our region and our communities need to be ready to change on a dime if we have to. So the bylaws that exist now or could be enshrined in law today or tomorrow or in a hundred and fifty days, we need to be able to turn on a dime. And so that means, for me, um, as, as, as a citizen of Queens, that if we need to be, um, thinking about food sustainability and food security that we need to enable all residents to understand what that means for them and us and a collective partnership around what that food security looks like. So if everybody has a chicken in their backyard or somebody has a chicken and someone has a pig, how do we kind of, um, partner on, on, on that kind of structure? And I know that's kind of, um, might sound wishy-washy now, but you have to drill it down to what that could look like in a, in the bigger picture of things, I guess. And listening to, to a couple of the speakers around the RV, uh, um, issue and what that means in, in terms of if, if it's stable housing or long-term housing for somebody that perhaps can't afford to, um, uh, build a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home or, or can't afford to buy a lot with a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home? Or maybe they have then bequeathed a lot with nothing, but they have an RV and they have a housing issue. We have to look at that as the reality of housing for some people and what does that mean? And, and if, um, you know, we have to get back to common sense, right? Um, government can't be the babysitter or the handholder of, of all of us or for every one of us. So if someone is, is living in a, an RV, um, more on that full-time basis rather than, you know, I'm staying here for two weeks because I'm visiting my family and I have this nice big RV. Um, but somebody else may be saying, well, look, I can only afford to live in an RV and I have enough common sense to make sure that I'm safe and I'm okay. And I don't need government overreach to say, well, look, you know, you may not know exactly how to live in that RV full-time or year-round. So I think we have to look at those sorts of considerations and to see what it means for all of our communities. And obviously, there are some communities that have different aesthetics, right? So if you live in a community where, um, say around the lake shores or in cottage country where everybody has, um, you know, the ideal retirement home that they've, they've worked hard for and, and, um, they, they have a certain look and then all of a sudden, somebody is, is, uh, next door to the next lot and they have an RV. Well, that's not kind of the look of the whole community, right? So that's not, um, so, so we have to look at that and see what it really means to us in, in, in reality, I guess. Especially if our communities change on a dime because something has happened globally or locally that's changed all of our perceptions of what our communities look like. And, and, and we see that happening all over the world and certainly COVID has shown us how quick things can change. So if we're enshrined in, in bylaws that strap us um, because of time constraints or because we've signed off on these, um, bylaws today and, and we're beholden with them for the next five years or ten years and then things happen. We need to be able to, as, uh, as, as a municipality, to, to be able to get out of those bylaws as quickly as we've gotten into them because we may have to change them in the future because of whatever our future is showing us. So.
And now, okay, and thank you, Vicky, for that. I now see you secondhand. And, um, basically, we are governed by provincial government in the process. And the timelines, they tell us when you can advertise, if, if you make a change in a bylaw, it can be a six-month process. If the day ever comes and the world flips like that and suddenly everybody needs food security and everyone needs a place to live, I think every bylaw is going out the window when we get to that point in time. Um, but for now, we're governed by the provincial government. They mandate us on when we advertise, how long we advertise, where we advertise, how long, how many public hearings, how many times it goes to council, it's strictly, we are strictly mandated by the provincial government. And we cannot flip and just change because, as you know, we are an uncharted level of government and they make the rules to the MGA Act. And we follow the MGA rules and that's what we have to do. Um, but when, when everything, if all happens in this world, um, you know, and I know and everyone else who's listening knows, who's gonna worry about planning rules when we are in a state where we're worrying about where the food's gonna come to our communities? Anyway, I thank you for that and you're right, it's good to let people know that we are governed by provincial government and we cannot just say, we're not gonna listen to you, government, we're gonna make it, we're gonna do our own process. So it's very, it's a very, very restrictive process under which we have to live. Susan Clark, I see your hand up. So we're gonna unmute Susan. Are we unmuted, Susan? There. Okay, Susan.
It's, uh, actually Gary Clark and, uh, Susan.
Gary Clark. Yes, you spoke yesterday.
I did and, uh, I'm glad I joined, uh, tonight's session. It's, uh, provided additional, uh, perspective on it.
So I just wanted to. Yeah, still you, we, we, we still need your name and civic address again.
Sorry, it's, uh, Gary and Susan Clark and it's ten sixty-one Central Port Maitoon Road.
And you're on.
So my wife and I, uh, built a house in, uh, Port Maitoon about, uh, three years ago. We're, uh, recent, uh, we've recently moved permanently here from a, uh, large city, city in Alberta. The appeal of, uh, Port Maitoon was that rural, uh, community. Um, you know, there, there's lots of adversity here, uh, the chickens, there's, uh, everything within the neighborhood and that was a, uh, big appeal, uh, to us when we moved down here. What we're finding, and, uh, I've, I've certainly heard, uh, you loud and clear, Darlene, in terms of, uh, the original bylaw in two thousand and nineteen. So I took the time and went through the, uh, document to say, jeez, what has changed in, uh, for Port Maitoon? Given this Hamlet, Hamlet definition is what is, uh, different in it. And I'm gonna suggest that there's really significant changes. So to say, uh, not many changes have occurred is, perhaps if I could make a suggestion, maybe give us a, a document that says, here's what's new. Here are the things that affect you. And then that helps in terms of, uh, alleviating some of the, uh, some of the aches that we see out there.
So that is, yeah, that is, that is a wonderful comment because Ian, well, we spoke yesterday about how we, how are we gonna get out the information, what's, what's, how can we do better than what's been done? And that suggestion of what's new, um, perhaps given out to different areas throughout the community might be very helpful.
So. Yeah, because, uh, Darlene, certainly at a high level, again, I came from a city and, uh, I've been involved in some planning exercises from a city standpoint. And it certainly appears this definition of a Hamlet, uh, you know, we're, we're twenty-plus minutes south of Liverpool is there are some, uh, things where governance is, uh, playing a fairly, uh, significant role in terms of, um, my definition of a rural, uh, community. So, um, taking some of that into consideration and, uh, looking at the bylaws, I would hope that there's, uh, an opportunity for discussion. Second point I'd like to bring up is, uh, as a newbie to, uh, Nova Scotia and this whole process is, I'm amazed at how many people, uh, are saying they weren't aware of the information, it's the first they've heard of it. Um, part of it's pandemic, part of it is the, uh, environment. But I would sure hope that, uh, council and everyone involved says, there's been a lot going on in the world. There's been people's lives turned upside down and, uh, is this the right time to push it through? My third point, uh, uh, Darlene, is, uh, you, you mentioned, uh, that first readings already occurred. Surprising, given the environment, but it is what it is, right? Is, uh, council obviously made the decision, uh, to, to, uh, push that, uh, forward and, and, uh, now people are catching up, people are reading the, uh, bylaws under, trying to understand what it is. And you're essentially, uh, telling us, and I understand why, you're, you're governed by it is a hundred and fifty days, it is what it is and, uh, a- and hopefully we can make some, uh, changes. And my last, uh, comment is, again, really glad, um, that I joined both sessions tonight. Fantastic speakers with some excellent, uh, excellent points is, and, and perhaps this is the question, I, I, I don't expect an answer, uh, for, for the format here, but, uh, would be great, um, to get a summary of, uh, to everyone of, uh, here's the, uh, points that were brought up and here's what the planning committee heard and here's what we're, uh, thinking before this gets signed off. So thank you for the, uh, time. Um, again, love Nova Scotia, love Port Maitoon. Um, loves, loves Queen County, Queens County and the people down here. But, uh, just listening to this is, wow, it sounds like quite a, uh, significant disconnect and, and, uh, I would sure hope that, uh, someone pumps the brakes as, as, uh, many people have said on this call. Thanks again for your time.
Thanks, Gary. And, you know, there's not one single member and I look around my council chamber because it's where I am and there's two councillors here now and other people are at home listening in. If any one of us would have even known of this much disgruntlement and opposition, I am certain there would have never been a first reading. Um, Ian did the best he could, the planning advisory did the best they could. We have no newspaper in Queens County, we put out municipal matters. It's very unfortunate when I tell people there have been notes, there's been, it's in municipal matters and people just, you know, and it takes something like this to make people go. And, you know, except for Forest Point, who have been actively engaged, um, most people haven't. And now there's this actual engagement, engagement. So the hundred and fifty days really means, um, so if you came in tomorrow and made an application, uh, for a permit or building development or whatever, you A, have to satisfy what's in our present documents that were adopted in two thousand and nine. And whatever you're doing can't contradict the proposals. So everything in the current still stands, but it can't contradict what's in the next, for the next hundred and fifty days. Um, anyway, though, these are big discussions that we're gonna have to have as council. And it's, I'm very amazed. Ian has his hand up. Ian?
Mayor Norman, I was just gonna add, if anybody does, is looking for a summary of the draft documents, uh, it is on, there is one on the project webpage, uh, queensplan.com in the library section. Uh, that, uh, basically outlines all the major changes from the two thousand and nine document.
So that's queensplan.com. Um, go to the library section and you will find a document that outlines the changes. But if you weren't aware of what was in the two thousand and nine, that's not really gonna do you a lot of good.
No.
Because those are only the changes, right, Ian?
Correct, yeah.
So, but anyway, but we are going to do our best and I counsel you, nod on your heads, right? We're gonna do our best to, I see, yes, um, we have to get this right. Um, I know it's past council started in two thousand and eighteen and now we're in a limbo. Um, but we're gonna do it, we have to do it right as best as we can. And, you know, sometimes I'm kinda hearing people don't want planning. And the thing is, if you don't want planning, then you can't complain to the region when something develops in your neighborhood that you actually, it's so not in your neighborhood, what you expect. I mean, so we find the balance is what we have to do. Who else would like to speak? I don't see anyone. Are we finished? Cause I'm gonna do the going once, going twice. I'm sign off right away. Oh, David Lane, uh, David's already spoken before, but we are going to allow. Didn't David Lane speak before? No. And it was a she behind David Lane, however, yes, we have a song, we have a hand up. David, who's ever under the David Lane.
Yes, hello, my name's Tara, actually. Um, just, uh, let me get the video going there. Uh, yeah, I just, uh, I'm not, I don't live in, um, Queens, so I just wanted to make a note that, um, uh, having these kind of documents available on your website would be very helpful for people looking into these kinds of things. And, um, you know, if there is no one else that would like to talk, um, from the region, would you be opening it up for others that live outside?
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak from the region? Cause um, and all the documents have always been on the website, all the drafts, the surveys, they've all been there. Um, I know, I know I'm supposed to say no, but I'm a little bit of a human being, so I'm gonna say yes. Um, but I'm gonna ask you to keep your time limit, keep your comments short. Okay?
Oh, you're talking to me. Okay. Yeah, okay. Um, yeah, and I just wanted to make a comment about, um, when we put forward, uh, regulations, planning, um, bylaws, that kind of thing. Um, when they're not done in, uh, the public realm, it is, uh, this kind of thing happens. Uh, I am, um, I am a planner, I have been a planner for a long time. Um, I have also stayed home and, um, y- looking after my kids, so I haven't, I'm not currently working, but, um, my experience is if, if this kind of thing isn't publicly available, um, and accessible. Uh, so for me, just wanting to go onto your website, uh, trying to figure out what, where to, to look for this information, I found it very difficult, just like most other, uh, municipal and provincial and federal government websites. So I'm just saying from a, a standpoint as a, a user, accessibility to the actual documents is very, very important. And, um, you know, there, there's, you know, possible, um, features that you can put onto the website that would make something a very current, um, updating sort of calendar. features that you can put onto the website that would make something a very current um updating sort of calendar type thing. Um but yeah, I I found it very difficult, let's just put it that. And um uh I must say that I uh want to concur with what um Noel and Gillian and Meg Curtis, that what they had said. I I agree with them wholeheartedly and I think that um too much government is, you know, especially in a rural area where people would would think to go, uh you know, to want to move to in in um especially in these times, I have found that that's something that I was looking to. I live in the city of Halifax and I um and we have uh the ability to have 12 chickens on very small pieces of land. And and I find it very odd that in a rural setting, you know, uh five would be the limit. I find it very um uh contradictory to um what's currently available in other jurisdictions. Anyway, those are my my points. Uh I would, I gave a submission in writing, um but I didn't receive any confirmation that it was uh received. Uh so I just wanted to make sure that I was would receive an email saying that that was part of the public record. And um I guess that's it.
And there will be emails sent out. We um we did not sort them out such that every email come in, receive an automatic, this is part of public record. But I do believe that that in the next few days, I know my inbox is full, my our planner boxes is full. And um that is a good, that we should notify people that, yes, your your um your correspondence has been received and is part of the public record, so. Thank you, Tara.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Um I'm going to scroll down my it'd be at the top and there's no one. I can just go through my pages? Let me see, one page, who's on the second page? I can't move to the second page. Oh, and I also, when I introduce people and I noted who was here and someone said I didn't say councillor Vicky. Um and then I said a marrow, so um we are all here listening to you and as well as the planning staff. I do not see any indication of anyone. Lindsay's, we have a Lindsay's iPhone. Right there, Lindsay. Nope, she's still, okay, Lindsay, we can hear you. Lindsay? You need to unmute yourself. Because you're So Lindsay, we cannot hear you, we've unmuted you on our end. Lindsay, somehow we, either you do not know how to unmute yourself because we cannot hear you and you are available to speak. Star six. Star six on your iPhone says Deputy Mayor Muse. Does that work for you, Lindsay? Okay, so I were waiting to see, oh, Lindsay, are you there? No. Byron, why not? You wish to speak?
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Byron.
Okay, I just wanted to state a statement that with regards to the 2009 uh document, that I was part of it as part of the uh planning committee at that time. And apparently, uh you, the staff or the office has not been overwhelmed with problems from that document.
Over the Byron, I know, I know you Byron, can you give us, sorry for interrupting, but I didn't get your civic address, even though I know it's
Okay, sorry, 125 Long Cove Road, Portman.
So continue where we were.
So all I'm saying is the 2009 document couldn't have been really that bad because otherwise the uh staff, the municipality would have been overwhelmed with problems that you'd probably, and that's not the real reason that you're presently uh are doing a new document, was because of the problems of 2009. So all these people that are really complaining about the that a lot of information shouldn't be in there, apparently uh was never any problem. That's all I have to say.
And I thank you. And basically, I found in the last few days, a lot of people had no idea of what were in the documents and because
No, but it didn't bother anybody.
No, because we didn't go around with a big stick, looking and spying and saying, oh, you've got this, you've got that. You know, but now people are looking at the rules and go with you know, and you know.
I'm sure anything serious would have been enforced from the document. That's reasonable, so. Thank you.
Okay, so um I'm back to looking down my list again and going through my windows. And I do not see anyone else wishing to comment. I remind people, we accept written um documents. Um you have councillors that you can speak to. Um our numbers are all on the website under council. The documents can be found if you ever, and I know someone said, oh, I can't find anything on your website. All you have to do is phone the office and we can direct you to where your information is. This is an open office and your councils, councillors are all open. They're all ready to listen and hear you. I know I travel and meet people and I'm sure your councillors will travel and meet you or arrange for arrange for communication. Oh, Lindsay's on muted now? There you are. Is she unmuted?
She was.
She was, now we can't hear you again. Can't hear you, there you are. Oh, now she's gone.
It keeps muting on its own.
Okay, so. Okay. Can hear you again, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, wow, okay, that was a, that was an adventure. Um I I'll just keep it fairly brief. My name is Lindsay and I live in your neighboring county uh of Lunenburg. And I do do a lot of um uh like my doctors in Liverpool and, you know, we do spend time in Liverpool. My parents live very nearby uh Queens. So I just wanted to kind of jump in and um and voice a little concern because I'm noticing that it is a province-wide initiative. It's not just something that's happening in um Queens County. It's also, you know, these these proposals are being made in neighboring counties and all across the province. And um and it's actually appears to be being actively pushed quite hard by our province because I I was able to find a document um in the last few days since I've heard about this whole thing. That sort of looks like it's been prepackaged by the provincial government um in an effort to make this as easy as possible for municipalities to push through.
Um so Lindsay, I'm going to interrupt you because what you just said is wrong. This this municipality adopted land use planning in 2009 because the citizens of our county asked for it. It had nothing to do with provincial government and I really want to hear constructive thoughts. And I really do not want provincial government criticized, it's nothing to do with them.
It's it's, sorry, it's not an effort to do that, it just, if that's what it seems to
But I, I've allowed, I've allowed outside people to speak. So please just keep your comments quick and to the point.
Okay, I apologize, I, you know, and I thank you for um um you know, clarifying that. I, you know, again, it was sort of one of these things that had kind of come up. So I was just uh curious as to that, but um or, you know, I guess I feel a little rattled now about it. But um uh it wasn't um meant to be a criticism of Queens in any way in that regard. Um I just feel a little concerned because it feels like it's getting close to home for me as well. And um I just wanted to show a little bit of support um for those who are also concerned in your county. So I will, I'll just leave it there since it
Thank you.
Seems to be the right idea. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because there were several years in the mid 2000s when there was things happening um in neighborhoods and people did not like them. So they came to the county at the time or the region of Queens and they asked for land use zoning and planning. There were hundreds of people involved in developing that first document in 2009. It was adopted and there was hardly any criticism of it at all. It was accepted, everything's been fine as kind. Every 10 years, you review your documents. So the documents went under review, there were major changes like hamlets were introduced. Most of the uses in rural areas kept, except if you were rural, that's now a hamlet or maybe there's some top streets in Milton. Um but it it was done because people asked. And like I said, this is me, this has become a very awareness because of social media, which is a good thing of what is in these documents. And we are listening and we will do our best if we believe the majority of people in Queens County want things left wide open and they don't care what comes next door and they don't care what happens and whatever. Um I personally believe people don't want that. I do think they kind of like what's around them, but you still have to find a way to allow change. So um we are listening, we're in the middle of this now, it's been four years already. What's another three months if we hold up a bunch of development or permitting for whatever reason? Um that's the way it will have to be because I know myself and council, we just want to get this right. And I know, Ian, you didn't expect to be here for how many years? And like we said, we don't want a cookie cutter document either that looks like I'm a home bay because I think you understand here in the municipality of Queens, people like the rural lifestyle. They really do. People like having a couple cattle, they like having a couple hogs. They, you know, and if people move in and they don't like that, well, guess what? Maybe that's what we are in rural Queens. Um but we have to find some balances. I understand within the urban areas, Milton, Brooklyn, Liverpool, and those core condensed areas, they're accustomed. They've had planning since probably 1990s in those areas of Queens Counties before amalgamation. So but we need to get this right and we will get this right, so. Is there anyone else before we call it a night? There's no, there's going to be, no, don't worry that there's going to be a big rush, then we're going to adopt these documents because I've got a sense that nothing's happening quickly. And we certainly was not our intention to push these through and sneak these in. Um we hadn't heard anything. Um Deputy Mayor Muse was on the past council, Deputy Mayor Muse, you started this process in 2018. And have you ever had this much involvement before with people? No, and it's hard to spread information. And now we're getting it, so now we're hearing it. So the next steps are going to be, as as I've been saying over and over tonight, um Ian and staff are going to compile everything we've heard. I believe yesterday we were talking that we may just publish a paper and somehow get it out there for people to understand and read and recognize. Council's going to have to have some serious discussions about what we're going to change because what I'm hearing are some major alterations um to the document, which means we go back out again for public consultation and reasoning again. Um and obviously, people are very updated and are going to keep tuned into this. So don't think that next council meeting, we're going to vote on this and push it through. Um I don't want to get hung, councillor Charlton doesn't want to get hung. We are here to represent the voice of people. And in a bad way, it's kind of bad that it's taken this and that we've had that first reading. Um but that's where we are at. So I thank you all, you're a great, respectful audience, you've been a good listening audience. I remind you again, get a hold of your council, we will attempt. Um or we will, I I'll say we will um acknowledge those who have sent um submissions, so you know that your submissions have been received. It may not be tomorrow, but you will have an email stating that, thank you very much for your submission to the public hearings. So I believe at that point, I am going to say good night. Um just be big solar flares tonight. Might be a little bit of satellite disconnection. Um the news said maybe some northern lights can be seen with these great solar flares off the sun. So um I thank you all, thank you for being part of this. And again, contact myself, contact your councillor, um provide a written submission. We are open and we are approachable and we want to hear um the good, the bad, and the ugly, as they say, so good night.